Of today, July 23rd is called to order. Lori Rowdiola will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I would simply to apply United States of America to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to postpone the approval of the minutes for July 9th. Mark, do you have the other ones?
Make a motion to approve non-public meetings on 416, 1, 2, and 3, and 521, 1, 2, and 3. I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
No, we got these.
Second.
Make a motion to approve non-public meetings on July 15th.
1 and 2.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Lori, with regard to the open container permit, I didn't see anything that indicated for what event or the location.
You know what, that is in the other red folder, which I forgot. So I just want to take a look at that tomorrow. I had Katie helping me build the agenda this week, so I'm not sure what.
Okay, we'll hold off on item F, Sue. Otherwise, it'll be A through J without the letter F. You have a second? Oh, he already did that. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public input. Anybody here without an appointment who would like to? Yes, come up. Right there.
We have a general here. I live at 6 Mill Lane in East Swansea next to the ball field. And I really don't want to be here and do this, but I'm here. I had a number of foul balls come over and hit my cars, and one of them has, I got two estimates, one's $800 and one's $1,000. And I haven't been getting anywhere with the Cal Ripken League, so I decided to come here and let you hear the story. I had a potential solution until this morning. I had the Menadoc Fence people over, and the solution was going to be to extend the overhang six to eight feet on two panels. I've got this all laid out with 3D ball flight simulator, and I drew in the actual backstop and put all the dimensions in. And Nick at Menadoc Fence appreciated that, but he said if we overhang it another six or eight feet, it's not going to support it. He suggested going to Tucker's and having them fabricate some brackets. And while that's nice and everything, that's going to be very expensive, and I was willing to pay for this up until that point. There may be some other solutions, I don't know. But I did want to get reimbursed for the damage to the car. I have an appointment to have it fixed at Quality Car Care. Any questions?
Well, I talked to Kyle, to Kyle, and it seemed like Kyle had some disagreements with you, and I was trying to mend that. I was trying to put us all together.
Yep.
So we're in the best interest of this whole situation.
Absolutely.
Because they got situations, they claim that against you, and you've got arguments against him, so I try to, I try to put you guys together and mend this problem as far as the dogs on the ball field and all this. And I thought I was getting somewhere.
Mm-hmm.
And I still feel I'm getting somewhere.
Mm-hmm.
As far as I left off with Kyle, he was going back to his board and tell him that you're willing to, to help out on your half, and they'll help you out and pay for the damage of your car. That's how we left off.
Okay.
And I can follow up with this, and I can call Kyle, and he can ask me.
Yep.
So, did you talk to Kyle lately?
I don't have his number, I don't have his contact information.
And so his arguments was, like I told you earlier, that you go over there at night with your dogs and you let them loose on the field, and that the ball game starts, and you start your mower up right when the ball game starts, and it seems like he went over there, he told me, and tried to work with you, and they were going to pay for it, and then they felt that you were a little, had a little attitude with them, so they canceled them paying for you, because they feel that they don't have to pay you for that. They're not responsible. So, I haven't looked into too far, but I, you know, I talked to Kyle, and I told him how you felt that you're willing to, to help out too, and, you know, make sure your dogs don't go over there, this and that, and he seemed very agreeable. Are you still on that same path? Or no? Because earlier in the day we talked, and then I got a text from you late at night, and it seemed a little different. So...
I've been taking my dogs to that ball field for 10 years.
Okay.
I pick up after them, and I pick up after a lot of other people's dogs.
Okay.
I've done a lot of maintenance on the fence there, because the kids are rough on the fences, they break things. I've actually welded some of the closures, I've glued other things together, I've put fence gates back on after they've been torn off. I helped to install the water system that's over there that was never hooked up, so that the ball field can have running water, which they use quite often. I support that ball field, I support the kids. I don't care how many balls come in my yard, they can come all day long, I just don't want my property damaged. I don't think that's unreasonable. It's private property. You can put a sign up on town property and say, "Park here at your own risk, and you're covered legally." You can't say that if you launch a ball into my yard and hit my car. The town is responsible ultimately.
So, what I'm going to ask you tonight, Bill, if you're okay with this, I want to follow up with this, talk to Kyle and see if we can put these guys together and see if we can fix this, because bottom line is, we just need everybody to get along and think about the kids playing ball up there, and it is what it is.
One other thing, I would never stop my lawnmower to annoy anyone. I never did that, and I never would. I'm not that kind of person.
Okay. All right.
So I did meet with Ashley, Vice Board Director, last week, I believe, and we've been working towards both of those issues, actually, on raising the fence height. I think it was about 14 feet that we would be able to raise it. And we are, we are looking into this, working, you know, collaboratively with Cal Ripken, and we are also going to be having, adding some signage down there, because there is a lot of people letting their dog, not just knocking you, there is a lot of complaints that we've been getting with the dogs being left loose in the ball field, and then the baseball kids, soon it will be the soccer kids come in, and there's, they're stepping in dogs. So, we are working to fix both of those. Just be patient with us, and we can figure out what we're going to do with this situation.
Just before you leave, what was the quote on, for Anthony?
It was like 800 and change.
Eight hundred and change.
I have it electronically, I can send it to you.
Okay, yeah, if you can text it to me, then I can talk to Kyle, you know.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Kyle about it, and we'll see if we can get that fixed.
Yep.
Once we get that, and then like Lori just told you, we're working on that.
Yep.
And we'll go from there, but we're just going to get to the bottom of this and fix it, so.
Yep.
I think that's always been something.
Does Cal Ripken have any, just given the game it's at, I mean, are there insurancees or by any of these owners, or is it all just happen?
Pretty sure Cal Ripken is responsible for a foul ball.
Yeah, that's one, yeah, that's one.
Yeah.
I mean, responsible for, if a coach wants to do something wrong, they would be held to, by the way.
Correct, correct.
This is one of your disciplinary penalties, or is it a baseball association issue?
I believe they are working it out.
Russell, there had, there had been communication from Cal Ripken that they wanted to try to resolve the issue with, with regard to Mr. General's automobile, something went awry, as Jim mentioned. And we are, we are looking, as Lori mentioned, with regard to the increased height for the, for the backstops, that would be a capital improvements item that will come up next month and potentially go on the ballot in '26. But it seems like now what we need to do is bring the parties together. Both seem willing to work on it and see if we can't resolve at least the damage to the vehicles. Any, anything else? Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else with public input? Cody Morrison, Director, Executive Director of Menadoc Economic Development Corporation. Good to see you, Cody.
Great, well, always a pleasure. Thank you for the introduction, and thank you for the invitation. I just want to make sure for housekeeping that I don't need to push any extra buttons before we're good to go. Fantastic. Well, again, thank you for the invitation, and thank you for allowing me to come and meet you all tonight. For, for the public and those who have not met me, my name's Cody Morrison, the Executive Director of the Menadoc Economic Development Corporation. We are a nonprofit regional development corporation headquartered in Keene, serving about 40 communities here in southwest New Hampshire, in Cheshire County, and western Hillsborough County. Historically, our business model and our activities have been more Keene-centric, just through our real estate development activities. And over the last few years, we have made a shift towards becoming more kind of inclusive of the communities that make up our service area. And one of the reasons that I'm here tonight and to come and speak with you all is to describe how we're doing that, and introduce ourselves and our organization to the new select board members, new city staff, and also update the public at large as to what we're up to.
Great, thank you.
And, and over the last year, so 2024, 2025, over the last fiscal year, we provide a technical assistance to over 20 businesses here in the Menadoc region of varying shapes and sizes, everywhere from larger manufacturers all the way down to small childcare centers. There are a few that are based in Swansea that we provided assistance to, whether making referrals and connections to organizations like the Small Business Development Center, or helping them with other parts of various, like expansion planning processes. It's probably one of the more lesser-known, less ceremonious and exciting parts of what we do, but it's all still absolutely essential. I do have occasional site visits with companies over in Swansea, and we do make it over to various airport committees and have a little bit of involvement in keeping the loop with what's going on with the development over in the airport, although the city leases it, it is just over the town line. I know that is of interest to the community. And over the last year, we approved over a million dollars in funding for community projects here throughout the region, not just in Keene. So, a couple of them include an award alone to the Menadoc in Jaffrey that'll renovate that property. We also made an award to the Maker Space in Peterborough. We recently helped a childcare provider in Whipswich access funding for lead remediation for their home. While none of those are Swansea-specific, what we want to do is we want to show that what we're doing is working to benefit the region as a whole. We recently had a board retreat process where we hired a professional facilitator to come in and help us kind of recalibrate and figure out how we can best serve the communities within our, within our region, given the MEDC is into a relatively newer business model, where we are working to become more of a bigger player in community and economic development finance. Maybe not so much just focused on real estate development, but to give us more tools to be able to help with various community projects. One, you know, a couple of the cornerstone of that new strategic plan, or strategic priorities are to, well, within five years, to have a tangible material benefit for every community in our service area, whether it's helping municipality get a grant or making a loan to a business, so that everybody in our service area sees the material benefit of the work that we do. Could be big or small. And we also are seeking to maintain a pipeline of grant sources for municipalities. So, right now, we have a Brownfields Environmental Remediation Program. We partnered with the EPA and with the state on that. This year, we made announcements and awards to the Town of Jaffrey and the Town of Winchester to clean up former industrial sites in support for redevelopment. Those are types of resources that we are looking to maintain as one of our priorities. Another priority is to become, is to be almost like a regional clearinghouse for things of community need, whether it be like home renovation programs or environmental remediation financing that can help just clean like old gas stations, laundromats, old factory sites. And as part of that, we want to be a, you know, a go-to partner for municipalities. There's only so many ways to expand a tax base and for municipalities to get more revenue, and with resources becoming a little more scarce coming out of Concord and Washington, expanding the tax base is one way to do that. And if we can participate in that, then we're doing our job. One example of, that we're working with the Town of Swansea on is helping as a LDD, what's called the Local Development District Grant Administrator for the Northern Borders Grant. That's for the West Swansea Village Infrastructure Project. It's a, it's a small thing that we're doing. It's a big project, and it means a ton to the community, but it's one way that we can kind of diversify the way that we help our communities. And this year, we also launched a Regional Housing Development Fund. So, we are historically a commercial lender as well. So, if you have a business, you want to buy a factory, and you need a little extra money to get across the finish line, you can come to an entity like ours, and we work with banks, and we can help you kind of fi, finish your funding stack. We are getting into housing as part of that. So, we've actually had businesses that have contributed to a fund that we manage that will help with affordable housing, whether from bigger, from big projects all the way down to somebody that just wants to buy a duplex and wants to fit it up, wants to do some renovations. So, we want to maintain a little bit of flexibility there. We're also deep into conversations and kind of work structuring with a few childcare expansion projects for home-based providers. We've had, we've provided some assistance, a little more informally to providers in Swansea before. That's one that, I believe the last time I spoke with you all in this forum, in this setting, I believe we had discussed that, that was more in the beginning stages, and now we're in the implementation phase. So, as part of our outreach, as part to, part of our effort to let you all know about the offerings that we have, we've been expanding our outreach. We started a newsletter this year, and if you haven't got it yet, we are slowly building up our list. We've been going to the county, going to others to get all the contacts or all the municipal folks that we can add on. So, you know, there's no, in conclusion, there's no real one way that we can help, there's many ways that we can help, whether it's with the business, but a big part of what we want to do is also be a better partner of municipalities and communities, so that we can help with more than just business needs, infrastructure, housing, childcare, other, other areas that ultimately serve as a bottleneck for our regional economy and local economies. So, with that, I will follow up with the manager, with just a little more information to pass on to you all, and to town staff. Town staff have been fantastic to work with. Stephon, I am in close contact with. He's, the planning department's been wonderful, Adam, they've been wonderful to work with. We also, on occasion, present to the Economic Development Advisory Committee, so Kathy Bergstrom and I are, play phone tag, and, you know, stay in contact periodically. So, town staff have been a joy to work with, and we're excited for another year ahead of deepening our partnership with the Swansea community. And with that, I can open up to any questions that you all may have, or suggestions, or that the public may have.
Could you talk a little more about the housing benefit that you're working on?
Yes, so, so we, the goal of what we want, the thing that we want to accomplish, there's a shortage in the market for gap funding or kind of mezzanine financing for affordable housing projects. With businesses, it's not as much. The systems are developed throughout the state. On housing, not as much. So, if you wanted to develop a big apartment building and needed the last 10% of your funding stack to get across the finish line, the systems in New Hampshire aren't as developed, and if they are, they're kind of centralized in Concord. So, we took it upon ourselves, and through the feedback from many stakeholders, businesses, community groups, to take it upon ourselves to create this regional housing fund that we can use to provide this gap funding to projects, big and small, as long as they have some sort of affordable component to them. They don't necessarily have to be, enough Section 8 is generally what is most often associated with affordable housing, but workforce housing, anything really we see is, that's available to those making like up to 80% of the area median income. And it's for a number of years. We, we aren't as restrictive as some of the federal programs are, but our point is to have, is to ensure access to flexible capital for developers to do what they do best.
How, you mentioned duplex, does it apply to single-family homes as well?
We, it's, it's not a requ, on single-family homes, we've got requests for like infrastructure build-out for like, like condo associations or co-ops. It's more on the rental side that we work, we, on kind of the, the single-family residential for-sale side, we're probably not as equipped to participate in that, just because of the amount of deed work and, and compliance that would be needed to, but we're not, we're not opposed to it. We just haven't, we haven't been approached with the idea, or with a project yet for it.
Sure. Anybody have any questions of Cody? Mark?
Cody, I have a question.
Oh, yeah.
You mentioned something here that got me thinking. So, we just haven't had the president and the vice president of Wilson Pond Association, it's just a loose association, it's unofficial. We've been coming around this board for quite a few years, stressing the need of Wilson Pond. There's a lot of aquatic growth in there, that really needs to be addressed before it becomes really costly. So, we look, we're looking to, you know, go through the steps together, but we can't do that because of where our standing as an association. We need the town's support to do, for doing that. It sounds like that's something that you might be able to help with. What we're looking to do is to kind of get water management program in place, get that grant to have that study done, and that study will kind of dictate what needs to be done beyond that. We can apply it for additional grants. Is that something that you would consider or be involved in?
Admittedly, water management is, water resource management is not an area of expertise in mind, so I'd want to learn more about it, but I'd be willing to have the conversation and to learn a little bit more. And if we are not the best partner, at least we can make a referral to DES or the folks at the Conservation Center that may be a better partner if we are not the best ones for it, but...
We can only express the need.
Yeah.
I mean, this was done in Swansea, the town was involved in doing that, so there's been some turnover in the town, so we will also come through. Supposedly, we were kind of next in line, but the process is tracked.
Yeah.
If it's even official.
One, one phone call I may want to make to is to Amanda Littleton at the Conservancy. She was recently with the Cheshire Conservation Center, and she recently took over that organization, but she, that might be a area that she would be more knowledgeable in than I would be. She's also MEDC, MEDC board member as well, so she has kind of that background, but happy to learn, we can chat offline at some point, happy to learn a little bit more. Again, not, not an area of expertise that I have, but always willing to learn.
Thanks, Mark. Thanks, Cody. Anyone else? Mark? Jim? Lori?
Yeah, nice to be here, Cody. Looking forward to working with you. Could you explain the childcare? You mentioned that you helped a local agency, and what would be the benefits of, how did you help them?
Yeah, so it's, think of it as like a entrepreneur expansion, like an entrepreneur incubation and expansion program that's focused on home-based childcare providers. So, if there is a childcare provider in Swansea that was, that had a home-based business and wanted to become licensed and needed a little bit of work to their home to make that happen, to meet licensure standards, we would be able to provide them a grant to make some improvements to their home, and we'd also be able to help them with some business planning stuff, and figure out how to get set up on QuickBooks, figure out if they should file an LLC or form an LLC, basic projections, business planning, and we can also, with some, through some of our agency partners, help them navigate the regulatory hurdles in the licensure side. And so, it's, it's basically soup to nuts what you would need, or what somebody would need to have a licensed, insured, legitimate daycare practice program from their home. Yeah.
Thanks, Cody. Thanks, Lori. Anyone else? Thanks for coming in, Cody, we appreciate it. Thanks for the update.
Terrific, thank you all, and I look forward to seeing you all again in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Leclair, you're up next. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the invite. My name is Dan Leclair, I live over on the Warmack Road. Of course, as soon as I start talking, my phone starts going off. So, I'm here today mostly because I'm sure you've all saw my post on the community page on Facebook. And I put that on there because I'm really concerned about the direction that Swansea's going in. Obviously, everybody has complaints, but it is what it is. So, what got me to this point, it really started years ago when they built all those same houses on 32, except it has a different siding color. And I'm thinking, I'm like, well, that kind of takes away from the charm of our Swansea Center. And then they put up the FW web building, which bothered me, because we have industrial park area over by Wilson Pond. Also knowing that I know a few other people that inquired about that property before also, and they always said they couldn't build anything bigger there because of the airport. So, when they put on this monstrosity right in Swansea Center, I was like, well, okay, this doesn't look good, this takes away from our hometown feel. And then obviously, the apartments, everybody complained about the apartments. Nothing you can do about it, it is what it is. And then, I don't complain about property taxes, I understand stuff goes up. I didn't complain once about property taxes, it is what it is. But what really got me was when I went into the town hall, and they put the door in where it had two beautiful open doors, you walk into the town hall, it was gorgeous. Now you feel like you're in a holding cell in between hallways at the county jail. Mark knows what I'm talking about. And I heard a synopsis of what happened, and I'm sure the incident was probably scary, but for me, that openness of the town is like an invitation saying, hey, our town is welcome, we are open, you know, we're here to talk to you, and now it's like we're isolated. And I don't, I'm not the only one that feels this way, I've talked to a number of other people that don't like it. And that's not my only, I have a few other things, hopefully there's no time limit.
There's one.
Okay, sure, one, all right. So, for me, putting that up, taking away that feel, is a false sense of security. It's like putting up a gun-free zone sign. Does it work? No. No. Because in all reality, when somebody goes back there, like I was there today talking to the building inspector, I mean, once they let me through, anything can happen. Am I wrong? Anybody can answer?
It was a dual, dual purpose. It was, it was certainly safety-based, but it was also job performance-based as well. And the system that we have now, I actually used yesterday. I, I was asked to come in, I called ahead for an appointment, I met with our admin at the front desk, Katie, she, she called to make sure the person was available, they buzzed me through and, and I got in. So what we were experiencing before was people essentially using it to some degree like a social club. And we have employees that, that have personal files or personnel files, personal files, credit files, people working on bookkeeping, grants, applications, any number of things being interrupted unnecessarily. And we looked around and, and there's places like the high school, the SAU, the hospital, other businesses that operate on a more professional basis. So for us, it was a dual purpose. Safety, yes, you're right. If, if you go in and, and you have a moment where things aren't quite going the way you want, sure, you, you could create an incident, but we also know that you're there.
Right.
This way, we felt that we were protecting staff from potential harm and abuse and at the same time giving them an opportunity to, to do their work, just as we have in all the other departments, police departments, same way, fire departments are the same way, DPW's on the road and recycling's out in public. But the ones that aren't were already set up that way. So for us, this was a continuation. It would have been part of the, the town hall renovation in any, in any respect, so that was our decision. Again, it was twofold.
Okay. And that's fine. Like I said, you guys made the decision, it's already up. For me, I guess, to have, I don't know, when I walk in, I enjoyed seeing the openness, you know, and, not tinted glass, but the frosted glass or whatever. It, it just takes away, once again, I've lived here since I was 15, 16 years, I've been here for a long time, 30 years almost, you know? So when you've been here this long, you're used to certain things done a certain way, you know? And when those things abruptly change, it's like, well, what, what's happening? So moving on to my next issue is...
If I could just go back to your initial issues. The, the comments that you made with regard to the structures that have been built or the housing that was built, those all went through either zoning perhaps, but definitely planning board.
Oh, yeah.
And so it's, it's not really relevant to us as a board. We, we don't provide.
Oh, I know. And I've, I've talked to Mike about it and like I said, I mean, laws are laws and ordinances are ordinances and if it meets all those criteria, guess what? Maybe somebody messed up along the way and didn't foresee something happening and we get stuck with something we don't want. Unfortunately, that just is what it is, you know?
And with regard to web, they did spend over a year trying to locate on Safford Drive and because of the issues with the, with the land, the wetlands, the slopes, the lack of water pressure for sprinkler systems, et cetera, they, they ultimately determined they had to pull the plug. In, in my opinion, fortunately, they decided to stay in Swansea and, and they did locate where they, where they currently are. They had to go through FAA glide slope approval, just like any of the other projects that are, that are within that area. So what, what people were told and what was reality may have been different things, but they did meet all the criteria for the FAA and also for our planning, our site plan review regs.
All right. And like I said, I don't know all the ins and outs. I was talking to Mike earlier, it's like if I wanted to know every detail, I would have to be retired and I'd have to do this full-time. I, I'm just expressing to you what I've seen, what people have told me, and, and that's basically it, you know? So, and that...
You did speak about our vision and, and basically our vision as an overarching goal is to maximize development in areas where we have infrastructure, because we do have infrastructure, and maintain the rural character that we have in, in areas of town where we don't have that infrastructure. But other than that, it's up to the individual boards and their members and the ordinances that people have, have voted on.
Right. And I guess that brings me to my next suggestion. I'm guessing you guys have an infrastructure plan because obviously the town's growing. And me looking at it from the outside in, yes, taxes just went up because I understand prices of things go up and whatever else, so, so I get that. But it's, now it seems like the town's trying to scrape money from any direction they can because of, I don't know, maybe the impact of all the apartments and the amount of people that are coming in, the impact that's going to have on our schools, the impact it's going to have in other areas. You know, like when I was talking to the building inspector, he's like, oh yeah, you need a permit for everything now except for basically redoing your roof. I'm like, excuse me? Because I'm doing a project in Swansea. I'm like, yeah, they're thinking about putting a mini split, we'll make sure they get a permit. For a DIY mini split? Why? Well, you don't want your house to burn down. Nobody wants their house to burn down, never in my life would I think I need a permit to put in a mini split that I can install on my own, you know? And I already had, and, you know, I talked to the building inspector and he seemed like a very nice guy, you know? And I don't know if he's calmed down since he's got here, but one of the things I added in, in my post was, I had one of my customers call me, ask me about the new building inspector because they had something, one of the portable sheds dropped on their property. And from what they told me, like I said, it's all hearsay because there's always two sides of the story, was basically he gave them a whole bunch of grief and was telling them they're going to be facing all kinds of fines and penalties because they didn't get a permit that they didn't know they needed to get. And apparently, this was the final straw for them because literally they sold their house and moved within a month. So that, that's another issue. Like, like I said, it's just, I feel like we're losing that community feel of communication and, you know, not that everybody needs to know that people's, everybody's ins and out of business, but I, I just feel like we're, we're losing, like I said, the community feel, the, the, everybody helping hands, helping people, you know, whatever, you know? If, if, I'm always using the building inspector thing because I don't, I don't want to like harp on him or nothing because like I said, he seems like a very nice guy. I'm just using that example. Like if I was a building inspector, if I was new in town and I saw something happen, I would probably call them and say, hey, what's going on? I noticed that you have this structure on here. Did you know you were supposed to get a permit? Oh, no, I didn't. Oh, okay, well, I just wanted to let you know. But from the way they described it to me, that wasn't the conversation. But those are the, those are the small things that I see happening, you know? And so when I talk about an infrastructure plan, okay, well, where do we see our growth rate in the next five years? Where is that money going to come from? You know, I understand you guys want to take control of the water situation, which I'm on board for. I'm not very happy that that didn't pass. I wish it would have because it would have allowed more businesses to come over to West Swansea, would have increased our tax base, which would have taken the burden off of the, the people that own property and houses in the town. Yeah, right? You know, so what's going to be happening over the next whatever amount of time to offset this while we are able to get that infrastructure put into place? I mean, is it, is it just going to be continuing raising property taxes? Another ish, I don't want to say issue, but another thing that I heard at the Swansea dump is they plan on putting a scale in to weigh vehicles because they don't think they're charging people enough money to throw away construction debris.
Danny, can I talk a few minutes?
Oh, yeah, go ahead. I was hoping you guys would talk, talk more, honestly, and inform me a little bit more.
How I look at it, okay? I'm going to tell you one thing, first of all, I've been sitting at this board for almost two years here and looking out the other side of the window is very enlightening. It's totally different, Danny. You can sit there when you sit here, but we all want to live in Mayberry, right? We all want Mayberry.
Oh, I don't want Mayberry.
That's what you're asking for, okay? You're saying we're closing town hall.
And no offense, please don't ask me what I'm asking for.
All right. So all I'm trying to say is, we're sitting here, we have to make big decisions. Whereas, we're going, we're having a hard time trying to figure out the growth of this town as well as you. This is a lot to us, you know, three guys sitting here running a large town, you look at Keene, they got a city council with a mayor. Three guys here that get picked upon constantly, okay? And we make decisions of this, we look at the whole picture. We looked at the consequence of somebody getting hurt in that town hall or how much does it really put somebody out to go to that window and see a nice lady saying, oh, how can I help you today and call someone? What is the, to me, it's this, this distance, okay? As far as how bad something could happen and how easy it is for you to go to the town hall. I don't see a problem with that. I don't see that taken away of any, you know, wholeness of the, of the town, you know? And one of the things that you're sitting here and you're preaching about is old school and everything like that, but yet you go on Facebook and spill all this out and get people all fired up, okay? And then instead of, you want to talk old school, come here, shake Bill's hand, shake mine and say, guys, what's going on with the town hall? Right? That's, that's, if you want to bring back that, I mean, we're trying to bring it back. We just had a softball game with everybody trying to put this community together. It's frustrating, Dan, for us. It's hard. We're trying.
I'm not, I'm not saying it's not hard and I don't appreciate you telling me I did something online to rile people up. I, my post had nothing, was nothing derogatory towards the town. I just said, I think it's going in the wrong direction. The, the things that I listed, people brought up a bunch of their own. If you notice, I didn't make a single comment. Why? Because I don't, I didn't want to, I just wanted to know how people felt about it. And from what I saw, there was only one negative...
To your question with regard to infrastructure and planning, we, we did, we did make the effort and put on the ballot, we had a tremendous opportunity to purchase the West Swansea Water Company and to improve that with the water tower and distribution and all. Unfortunately, we just didn't make, make the hurdle. We did get the majority of votes, but we didn't, we didn't...
Yeah, the three fifths.
...cover the hurdle. We are working with the West Swansea Sewer Plant, which is currently deficient, and we're working with the state and federal officials to bring it into compliance. At this point, we can't take any more hookups of any, of any significance, but our DPW director and his team have been working on that for over a year and we do have a study going on with Underwood Engineering that's going to come back in, in October. We've had discussions with the city of Keene with the potential of taking our sewerage from West Swansea and bringing it over to the airport plant. So we, we are working in ways that, that we can to seek out funding, grant funding potentially, hopefully, that will allow us to improve the infrastructure. We are doing that. And as I mentioned, our overarching mission or goal or vision is to maximize development where we have that infrastructure, prudent, prudent development.
And, and I'm not, I, I don't want you to think that I'm against it and, and Jimmy made it sound like that I was against what you guys are doing. I have a lot of respect for you guys. I mean, you come here, you, you work hard, you do stuff people don't see and stuff that I don't see. And that's why I'm here, is to ask questions. And, and that, because I want to know what's going on.
And, and we appreciate that because very often, we do have a, we do have a group that's been coming for the last year and a half or two years, but so often, we had meetings with nobody in attendance. So, and we're working with, with FELZ TV service to, to try to expand the, the opportunity for people to see it. But you're right, we, since we won SB2 back in 2000, I think it was, and we went away from town meeting, we did lose that, that sense of community and continuity, but our meetings are open. We have seating for about 30 people and anyone who wishes to come has an open forum. We, we haven't turned anyone away, whether they've been congenial or, or lacking some congeniality, but we appreciate the input. I want you to know that that's why we invited you here, because we do appreciate the input and your suggestions.
And it's not that I don't want growth. I'd love to see big businesses come in here because I know that's going to lower our property taxes. I mean, I have a pretty good business sense. I have three of them. So it's nothing like that. I just, I want to see, because as, as of right now, the property or the taxpayer, people that own houses in this town pay for everything, you know? The people that are living in the apartments and whatever, they're not paying for, they don't have to go to the dump to throw their trash away. They get a thrown away part of their agreements, you know? They don't, they're not doing, needing to build a garage or needing to put on an addition because they're just living in an apartment. It's the homeowner that takes the brunt of this. And what I don't want to see is people getting taxed out of their homes because we can't get the tax base with businesses like on the outskirts of town. I'm all about it. I think Swansea Center should be a historic district with certain, like grandfathered in, depending on the age of your houses or whatever else, that way, nothing crazy happens in Swansea Center. I'd like to see that, but around the outskirts of town, I'd like to see the town grow. I want to, I'd rather see businesses come in. I want more businesses like Market Basket coming in here. I heard there was supposed to have been a tractor deal and they backed out, which is too bad because like I said, you want that tax base. That's the tax base I want. I mean, I'm, I'm not against that. I don't want you to think that I, I want Andy Griffith walking around with Barney with his, with his bullet in his pocket. That, that's, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is I feel like we're getting away from that, that, that small-town feel and that, that small-town openness and community feel because of the town possibly maybe growing faster than it should be growing or that, that's why I'm here to ask these questions.
We have no control over that, unfortunately, or fortunately. Russell?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a quick math. Numerous times I've gone in town hall, just peek through the building's back. So also I look, I walk in, the Blue's back is not there. How do I know he's not there? So what do I do? I go to the next, next room, see if he's in there. There's a girl that is, she says, can I help you? I said, look at the Blue's back. Well, I don't know if he's here and he's out. And I interrupt her, and we go to some other office with her and interrupt one more person to try to find the Blue's back there. If it would have had me just stopped, though I walked in, I could have said, I'm here for the Blue's back, and they would have said, he's out right now, can I take your name and number or whatever.
Oh, no, I get that. That's what I do all the time. I stop and then I ask first.
So that happens, that, that, you know, happens a lot. In a good time, when I walk in, I want to look at the lock back. If you just came walking, so I could have found out who is in charge of the lock. So I could have interrupted three people to find out who's got the shovel lock. I could have found out without going, I would have just stopped on the way that she would have said, hey, I'll get Mary Ann or Bobby or whoever. And just go look at that.
Oh, yeah.
The point is, is that you go to Warmack and you go in and buy some cold medicine. You have to have a person, you got a week there, a person comes up with a key, it takes a plastic box off because people make drugs out of there. And they got to unlock it, then they got to carry it for you like it's a fire alarm to the cash register.
I get it. I don't like that either.
So the old school stuff is all over, that's the problem out the door, long time ago. My wife works at the hospital in, in our, in your HR. In order to get it to her now, it's been a long month, but in order to get it to her now because of my ring, she has to push a button to find out who they are, what they want, and she presses it. I mean, this is a new, the new world now, it's a whole new...
Hey, I get it. I'm, I'm, I'm not, I just think there could have been a better way.
Well, the other thing is that you get on Facebook...
That's, that's all I'm saying.
But the other thing, you get on Facebook, I'll give you a example, Joe DeRusso was here answering questions to people about, about the roads. Somebody asked about last, last year being paid, and he said, well, the way I'm going to say it with funding is now he's going to go on to 2026 or 27. So people on the internet automatically goes on Facebook and says, that man should be fired, that man should be fired. Well, it's not up to Joe DeRusso to allocate, allocate money to whichever road he's going to be paid, so because, so they don't know what they're talking about, so they want to get a guy fired instead of going to the town and talking to these people.
Yeah, don't do that.
No, but that's only by people that jump, come sometimes.
Oh, no, I, I, I get, I get that completely. And like I said, I'm, I know the times are in. I worked at the medical center of security for a number of years, I was a police officer. I mean, I, I get it. I, I just, I just think it could have been done differently. So...
Michael?
I've talked to Dan about this before and what I've done through the Republican Committee is our monthly meetings are going to be different. Staff members coming in, department heads coming in, nonpartisan meeting, there's no politics involved at all. The last meeting we did last week with Joe DeRusso come in, I think the people, we don't look very, very well. And in August, we're going to have the fire department, we're going to have a meeting with the fire department, again, non, nonpartisan, no politics. Again, non, nonpartisan, no politics. It's just something I feel that as a town official, that we have to have even more open dialogue with the people. So they'll understand where these department heads, what their jobs are, what they're running into, what they have to do. And then the people have a chance to answer questions. The Marcy Hill people were there, and they got their answer about, well, when are we going to get that road fixed? Okay? I had tried to tell them at one of the zoning board meetings, but they wanted to hear from Joe. That came in, and I've got, I know Lori said she would do one. Uh, uh, Chief John Zallos is going to do one, so those meetings are going to be available to everybody. And we'll post them, the date and time they're going to be right on the Swansea page.
Okay.
Thank you, Mike.
Like I said, I was just here to ask questions. That was it. Not keep Swansea Mayberry.
Did you, did you get some answers?
Some. You know, I would, I'd like to see a broader vision for Swansea, but we're at a starting point. And like I said, I don't know where you started from, so we, you guys might have gone a hundred miles, and I only think you went a half a mile. You know, so, but that, that just is what it is, and hindsight's always twenty twenty. And everybody will, there's always something people will complain about, no matter how good it is, so.
We are going to try to bring back old time town, some meetings, right? We're going to try to bring that back if we possibly could.
You know, that, that's all. What I'd like to see come back is.
I've got his name up. Anybody I've spoken to in this town is more than happy with Joe and his, and what he's, he's a hard worker.
Yep.
He's strong, so.
Well, that's what I meant when I said to Danny, when on Facebook, people add on to it, then they get, and it corrupts us, it gets a snowball rolling. That's what I meant by that. And, you know, I meant by that, it's, it's dangerous. It's not healthy, that Facebook thing. It doesn't do no good for our town, I'm sorry. I haven't seen that positive in any way whatsoever. It's where somebody can sit home and say what they want, put their phone down and continue their talk show and have no repercussions of it. But yet people add on to it. And that's the problem we have. And this is why we have everybody getting different stories of where the money's going.
I think I'm due there, be searching.
That's right.
Well, and, and also to me.
Yeah.
Like, if a bunch of people said they disagreed with me, I wouldn't be here right now. For me, I like the input of the town, and unfortunately, to get massive input from the town, you have to go on social media.
You all sit here today and convince me that you got massive input to, that we shut down that town hall.
I never said shut down the town hall.
You said that a lot of people agreed with you.
I never, I never said about shutting down the town hall.
Well.
Can we, can we move on? Uh, we, we've got to move on on our agenda.
Oh, that, that, that's, that's fine. I just, okay.
Did you have any, anything else? I would like to address.
No, thank you for.
I, I would like to address the comment with regard to the scale at the recycling center.
Yep.
Uh, that is something that we've discussed several times. And it's our, our goal and, and what Josh Whipple and his team have done to, to accomplish our goal, which is to make it revenue neutral, uh, potentially revenue positive, has been phenomenal. And, and one of the challenges is the, the amount of, or the subjectivity of the amount of construction debris that's dumped, uh, whether it's by Swansea residents or contractors bringing in debris from other communities.
Mm-hmm.
We don't know. But by having a scale, if, if we can prove out that it'll be financially prudent, uh, would give us an opportunity to charge appropriately. And, and that's the reason that, that we're doing it again. It's to, to try to reduce costs, to reduce the burden on the, on the property taxpayer. That's our, that's our vision for that.
That's fine. Like I said, I was just talking to one of the attendants there, and he didn't seem very happy about it. He's like, oh, I don't think they know we do our jobs and we do charge people to throw stuff away. And so, like I said, I talk to people. I don't come here, I, I.
Yeah, but now that you heard that answer, do you feel you're agreement with that?
Hey, if it lowers property taxes and it, and it, and it makes it so, uh, the transfer station can be run without tax. Yeah. The, the, like I said, that's why I'm here.
Russell?
I just wanted to, you know, just basically add that the only difference is you're pulling your wood or whatever you're pulling in anyhow. So what's the difference if you pull up on a scale? I mean, so start to think about what the, what's, what's the impact of having a scale to the tumor? You're pulling through the parking lot and you have, wow, you're driving behind your car instead of driving over there, you just drive over here. So I mean, why would that even bother a person if you have a scale?
And it can benefit both sides.
Exactly.
It can benefit the guy that's coming up there, and Josh is saying, I want a hundred dollars, and it's worth fifty dollars.
Before I start to think about what the impact is, before I complain about it, and there's no impact there. You drive in, you drive in anyways, drive over the scale, let's just drive over there.
I, I mostly use the Keen dump, so I always use their scale. I would, like I said, the guy, the guy that worked at the dump was telling me about this. He didn't seem happy about it. He said a bunch of other people weren't happy about it. I wanted to know what, what it was about. I'm not complaining about it.
It's strictly a discussion item. Anyone else have comments? We appreciate you coming in, Dan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next item, we're going to just move the agenda just slightly, Josh. Not a whole lot, just slightly. We're going to ask Mr. Whipple, the other Mr. Whipple, Art, to come up and explain to us why we should engage him as our deputy emergency management director. Art, how you doing?
Very good. Good evening. Art Whipple, I live over one-on-one South Winchester Street here in Swansea. Uh, spent many years in the emergency services in the community. I recently retired two or three years ago from the fire department, but I still have that itch to help out in the community here. And I had contacted Kevin Westcott, the director. I sent him an email and told him I was interested in maybe in volunteer status or whatever they have to assist in the town. I met with him, I brought in my resume. Uh, I met with him a couple more times, and the, uh, floated the idea if I'd be interested in maybe coming on board as the deputy director. And I, I told them that should certainly, I would probably think about that. And I recontacted him and told him that, uh, that was probably something I would like to do. I know he, he told us that the department's a little bit in a disarray. I know we have things at different fire stations and different places in town. And we're going to coordinate all that together when we get a room of our own, either at the fire station or for it possibly down in the old fire station they're talking about. He asked me if I knew anything about radio communications. I do, because he, we have a couple of radios he knows nothing about. I explained some to him. I, I showed him with a portable, uh, the different channels and that. So I think between, probably between the two of us, maybe we can get a, a plan going. I know we have a mitigation plan that needs to be within a year. Is that correct? Yes. So that's something that we will get after.
That, that's updating the current plan.
Right, right. Yep. And I, and I did communicate with Kevin today, and because he told me, he said, I, I will not be there. He said, but you should be all set, so.
He's a confident man.
Yeah. Any questions?
Welcome.
All right.
Or would you like a motion to make it official?
Make a motion.
I move to accept the appointment of Art Whipple as deputy emergency manager director.
And I'll put a big second on that.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Hi. Welcome, Art. We appreciate you stepping up for this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ross.
Josh Whipple, welcome. Nick, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good, thanks.
Hi, Ned. I was down there the other day, and I couldn't say hi to you. You were buzzing around with that skid steer. Just the season.
Okay, so you want to spend money? After what you just heard for half an hour, you want to spend money?
This could save us money in the long run.
Okay. You think you can convince us?
Hope so. Um, so just a little background information. Uh, the current Bobcat we have is a two thousand twenty-one, purchased in October of twenty twenty-two for sixty-six thousand five hundred with a three thousand dollar trade-in of the then dead skid steer that really wasn't worth much at all. Um, so that brought the total to sixty-three thousand five hundred dollars for the two thousand twenty-two. And as of July first this year, we've put three thousand twenty hours on it since two thousand twenty-two. So it gets more than its work done. Um, and we've had little bit no issues with it so far. Minor hydraulic leaks, um, simple stuff because we keep up on the maintenance, make sure everything's greased. Uh, filters cleaned, oil changed on time, so we've had some pretty good luck with that one. So the benefits of a second Bobcat, it would save in costs for rentals if we had downtime with our current one for maintenance repairs. Um, or if it's out doing another job. Uh, it'll offset the hours of the primary skid steer to lengthen the lifespan of both machines. It'll help expedite shipments of recyclables, so we'll be able to stage quick. So he could be loading the truck and I could be bringing bales out to him so we can get it out quicker. Uh, anything over an hour, I believe, is typically, depends on the company, but there's some sort of demerse charge for it. Could be a hundred, two hundred bucks. Um, right now, we, I don't think we've ever had one of those charges, but never know. Something could happen midway through and be able to top off the load without, uh, sending a short shipment. Uh, it'll also allow us to train a third or fourth employee for safety and coverage on the machine. Um, we have one person right now outside of us that's ran skid steers for quite a long time, so that would be helpful with there. And then give us an opportunity to train some other people too. The second Bobcat's the same model, so all the parts are going to be interchangeable. Um, I actually stopped there today and got some extra fuel filters, some mods and ends, so, um, to keep up with that stuff. And also to go with the Bobcat requesting for an eighty-two inch rock bucket, it's going to be useful in a lot of different situations, whether it's stirring the compost pile, picking out sticks, um, rocks, anything like that. So it'll be a finer, finer material and better. Um, it'll be great for the burn pit because right now we have that huge pile and there's no real easy way to shake all the compost because it's all composted in on itself right now. Um, and can't burn it like that, so we're going to have to just move it slowly. But with the rock bucket, we'd be able to pick it up and all that extra compost would fall as we're moving it. So it would definitely be very beneficial from that. And then separating out rocks, rock bucket, it'd be separating, separating out rocks from DPW drop-offs such as just fill and stuff like that. Because right now we kind of just spin it out and then run over, pick the rocks out. So save a lot of time with that, and we'd be able to use that for fill in certain areas or fill in some of our paths. Um, any questions so far?
What's the total number on, on this?
Uh, so for the second requesting one is sixty-six thousand with a, and that's after, um, four thousand municipal discount. And that includes also the four solid tires for the machine. So it'd be sixty-six thousand total for the actual quote, and I estimated seventy thousand for the twenty twenty-five CIP plan. So came in a little under on that. So it's actually five hundred dollars cheaper than our current one, which doesn't make sense, but.
And, and the bucket that, that you want to add?
Uh, the bucket's thirty-one hundred and forty dollars, and I estimated five thousand on that. So the grand total would be sixty-nine thousand one hundred and forty dollars.
So that's under your original seventy thousand dollar.
Yep, with both included, so.
What was it? I mean, you said earlier sixty-three thousand five hundred. What was that for?
Uh, that's what we purchased our current one for.
The one you, that's what you paid for the last one.
But that included a trade-in also. That was the total with the trade-in.
So the new one with the bucket, sixty-nine one four oh.
Yep, and that comes with a regular, regular bucket also with a cutting edge.
Oh, so you have two bucket, you have the regular bucket, then you just swap out the rock bucket where you want to use it?
Yep.
And the rock bucket will fit on the other one too?
Yep, yep, and that's the beauty of.
Same exact machine?
Same exact machine.
Just another model?
Yeah, this one's a twenty-four, so end of the year model, one of those things, so. Um, and the current balance of the capital reserve fund is a hundred and thirty-one thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-three cents. Um, and then I also put some of the other items that were on the CIP for twenty twenty-five.
What do you, what are you here for tonight? The?
The skid steer and the bucket.
And the bucket?
Yep, so the sixty-nine thousand one hundred and forty dollars out of the capital reserve.
And when would it be delivered?
Uh, he said he's got it in stock, so it's basically just getting the paperwork together and meet with Therese and then signing that, send it over.
And it's going to come out of which fund?
Uh, I believe it was the capital reserve.
For the recycling center?
Yes.
Okay.
And you said that you had one thirty-one, what was it? One thirty-one, eight hundred and eighty-one or something?
Is the balance right now, yeah.
Is the balance right now?
Yep. And then even with the other stuff on the list, that was, that's going to be a later date for that stuff. But that'll still keep us under our overall budget with it, so should be in good shape rolling into next year also.
Was this in the long-term plan that you wanted to skid steer?
Oh, I've been.
Always you wanted it?
Probably five years because.
So this isn't just like this year?
No.
You know, two would.
Yeah, no, this has been in CIP for quite a while. Yeah, um, so like when our other machine broke down, it was down for two months almost. It was crazy. And luckily Bobcat helped us and they brought one in for a while, test drove that one, so that kind of filled the gap. But then we had to rent, they had to pick it up, and we rented one from Ace, and I believe it was like twelve hundred dollars for the week just to get everything caught up, and then they came back and picked it up and.
Oh, I never thought of that one.
It, it's expensive to, yeah, so any downtime.
And then did you just say if somebody's loading the truck, if you take too long, the driver's sitting there, they charge you extra?
Yeah.
So you're taking off of whatever you load, money, right? You lose.
I mean, we're, we're pretty quick and efficient.
That happened, but if you have.
Yeah, yeah. And you never, you could blow a hydraulic line halfway through, and then the truck's half-loaded and you're dead in the water pretty much.
So it sounds to me it's like it's all that savings involved just by having this.
And I didn't.
Itself eventually, maybe is, but it will.
Yeah, and I didn't want to go outside of Bobcat because I think we're going on twenty-two or three years working with them. And anytime I've had a question on how to fix something, the mechanic will walk you through it over the phone. They're great, great at helping that. Um, they don't charge to drop the machine off or pick anything up for us. So they've always, always been a big help with that stuff.
Anything else, Josh?
Um, nothing on that, no, unless anybody else has questions.
Is it, so they, the salt doesn't need him away? Did I hear that? Did I hear something about the wheels or something?
Uh, they're solid, um, solid rubber wheels. We actually.
I heard the word salt or something.
We actually, one of the ones they dropped off last year for us when we had a hydraulic issue had, they didn't have any of the tracked machines. And so the last day when they were coming to pick it up, I look over and the back tire pops. Caught a nail trying to go up and dump metal or something and got, the driver came as it was slowly going down. So they never charged us for any of that. They picked the machine up, took care of it, so it was really good of them.
Any discussion? Make a motion?
Make a motion that we authorize Josh Whipple to spend sixty-nine thousand one hundred and forty dollars for a new skid steer and bucket out of the capital reserve fund from the recycling center.
Is that adequate?
Yeah, that should be perfect, yeah.
That's, that's right on?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What else?
And then I was just going to do a quick department update if that's okay. Um, so some of the, this is coming off the list from the last department update I did, so I kind of took the ongoing and put it in the completed section. New front gain, front gate sign's been put up. We're working on doing stuff so it's more permanent. We're not scavenging it together just to make stuff work now, now that we've got the nice facility. We want to start really making stuff that's going to last longer and not be replaced every four, five years, so. Um, I think that other front gate sign was there for seven or eight years, and after this winter, it was falling apart. It was all wood, so now it's on metal poles. And if we ever have to replace it, you just unscrew the current one, put a new one on, and good to go with that. Painting, we had, uh, worked with the DPW director on painting lines through the drive-through. And they came a couple, last month on a Sunday, they did it, three, four hours, looks great. I think the total was three hundred and ninety dollars or something like that, so well worth it. They, straight lines, because I was thinking about doing it myself, but for that money and how good they did, I think it looks great. Um, and it seems to be working out great. Everybody's been staying within lines and kind of solved some Saturday issues. Got the new cones also for the center, so we removed some of those old, old yellow cones that were starting to peel and fall apart. So we got rid of those and got some nice cones that will last us a lot longer now. Got the new cones also for the center, so we removed some of those old, old yellow cones that were starting to peel and fall apart, so we got rid of those and got some nice cones that will last us a lot longer now. Recently did some Bobcat maintenance with the oil change and some of the fuel filters, kept that completed. Moved the tire and propane shed to accommodate for easier pickups for vendors, basically just built a frame and rotated it this way, so instead of coming down and backing by the glass pile, they can just drive right down that slip lane, going out back and load up and on, on their way. Any questions on that?
It's looking good, Josh.
So ongoing, right now I'm working on finishing the guard shack that one of the town residents donated the wood for and another resident donated the windows for. That's almost done, probably another week or two. Nick's been doing a lot of the training for other employees, he's taking the lead on that. Brush pile work, that's going to be snow time by the time we finish all that, so we've been working on it, burning quite a bit, so just need some good rain and get out of the dryness. Wastewater certification, I kind of want to table that and make that a whole different meeting. Still working on the plastics pilot program, we're getting about sixty pounds every two weeks, and we still haven't made a full bail yet, but I think we're getting pretty close to being able to bail one.
Yeah, another week or two, we should be able to do, uh, do our first one through seven plastic bail and see how it goes, I guess, with four bailers, because we're constantly using two for cardboard, so we have to time it just right to try to squeeze that plastic in there, so we'll see.
Yeah, probably Wednesday or Tuesday morning, when it's not too crazy.
So with regard to the shed that, that you're building, we just want to make note that it was Brian and Jen Rogers.
Yes.
Who donated, Mark and Vicky Scolera.
Yep.
Who donated to it, and you're doing a heck of a job, it looks really good, you're doing well.
I appreciate all the donations for it, and it, one of those things where I want it done right, so it's going to not be a four-year thing, it's going to last a lot longer than that.
How old is the old one?
Two years, maybe, two or three?
Maybe tw- it was for COVID, I think.
And you're planning to recover that one with the extra metal, too?
I'm probably going to destroy that one and make a duplicate. So they're going to look both uniform, have the same matching metal as a building.
Second on a pig, right?
Yeah, yeah, second Bobcat will run that over, no problem.
Good idea. Your test run.
Should be Brian and Jen Rogers and Mark and Vicky Scolera.
Nice windows, huh?
Yeah, they're working great.
They work, they were hagging up and down. They're going, they're starting to.
Yeah, saving money on them. Then, under the other information, just a brief overview on everything we've been doing so far. Recycling tons were up to a hundred and sixty-eight point four zero tons, and that's not counting some of the shipments we already have out, just waiting on waste slips on those. And so then that gives us a cost avoidance so far of twenty-four thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars avoided out of the landfill. And then MSW tons were up to four hundred and eighty-nine point four six as of July sixteenth, and that comes in end of the month every time. And then recycling, I'll get those probably once a month, they'll give me updated weights on everything, and then the checks will come in offset usually a month after we ship them, so it's kind of a little backed up on everything with that. So that brings a total tons of six hundred and fifty-seven point eight six tons with a diversion rate of thirty-four point four one percent, so right on track for the thirty-five to forty that the goal was at the beginning of the year. Next one's just kind of bud, budget information, as we're in pretty good shape so far, I think we're going to have. I think I averaged out nine to ten thousand left over if everything goes smooth, which something always happens, I can't really plan that way, but we got a nice cushion for the end. So far with revenues and cost avoidance, we're at seventy-two thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars, or thirteen point six six percent of our operating budget recoup so far, so.
Do you have an idea how that's trending versus last year?
Um, we're about on par, it's definitely a little early to see the final numbers, once everything comes in. That's one of the harder ones to estimate until the end of the year, and then you get the full picture of it all. And then the last section of that is just our fees. Right now, we're forty-nine point six four percent left to collect on our estimated fees for the year. We're thirty-three percent left for electronics to collect and estimated fifty-seven percent on the recycling end, which I think we're easily going to hit that mark at sixty-five thousand this year. We've got a full shipment of paper out back, which is not worth much right now, so I'm either going to ship a full load of newspaper, which is typically a hundred to a hundred and twenty dollars a ton. And mixed papers at seventy-five dollars a ton charge right now, which we haven't seen that in seven, eight years at this point, we've consistently made at least something on it. So I think that's kind of why the New Hampshire Recycles hasn't bid it out for us yet, so they're also looking at trying to help us get the best pricing on materials like that. So for the rest of twenty-twenty-five, we're looking at the waste oil building replacement. It's leaking, it's causing issues, we've got squirrels that you can't keep out of there, and overall, it's just a, I think the last thing that will tie the whole project together and that will really polish up the curb appeal and use of the facility for us, so I think that's going to be huge.
Do you, uh, will you be taking those funds from your reserve, or do you have funds allocated for that?
That would be out of the reserve still. And then glass, glass shipments have been kind of here and there this year. They're trying to send us to Canada, which has worked out great, it's just a matter of getting them to come here. So we were going to ship today, but they always do last minute, and I need the DPW help to fill thirty tons worth of glass. And Joe's been great to send somebody over every time, and the vendor itself's been great, it's just a matter of lining both of them up. And they texted me last night to see if they could do it today, and just couldn't make it swing today, so. Couple other things left for this year is repair the fence line and gates, that'll probably be an end of summer project, and I don't expect any costs to come out of that. It's more or less just straightening some of the elbows and fixing the front gate that's kind of bent in from a snowplow a couple of years ago.
Pleasure.
And then the last is just shifting some material around to organize and pretty much set ourselves up to ship everything out by, I usually like to get it out by the end of October, that way, by the end of the year, everything's lined up to roll into twenty-twenty-six, nice and smooth. And we'll have all our weights ready for the end of the year report, so it's a lot easier to just ship everything by the end of October, so already lining stuff up now to finish off the end of the year. Any questions on that?
The next donation would be refrigerated, right?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll get him one, get him a good one.
Mark might have one soon. Going to buy a new one.
See, anybody have any question, Mark?
Josh, will the three, three through seven, will they be all together?
Yes, yep, yeah, and really, we're just waiting.
I've been saving for you.
Oh, nice. Yeah, you can bring them down whenever, just let us know and we'll. Oh, yeah. Yeah, we'll have a better, better idea on what we're going to do with them once we do that first bail, how the bail actually holds together, what the weight is, and.
Seems like a lot thrown, uh, thrown away.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, yeah.
I guess it's just that gift is thrown out of the way.
Yeah, so the goal is to get all the plastic out of the waste stream, so might not add up to a lot, and I think right now the pricing's on at one cent a pound revenue, which is, we're not paying the hundred and twenty per ton disposal rate, so not making much, but we're saving a lot, so that's the best part about that.
Anyone else?
I just want to say, great job, Josh, I've been going on weekly tours with Jimmy to each of our facilities, kind of getting a feel for everything, and it's quite an operation, I was very impressed.
Yeah, part about field trips, she put you up in the top two, so.
We got a great team.
I don't want to tell you who the top one was.
Yeah, yeah.
These field trips are getting hard.
Yeah, we have a great team, that's for sure.
Yeah, you did really good with that.
Anybody else? Thank you, guys, thanks, Nick.
Thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
Have a good one. Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is the approval of the Cardinal surveying estimates, did every, did, did you guys both get a chance to, to see and, and have an understanding of what's being requested? This would be a boundary line adjustment between the cemetery and Jojo Mead's property, apparently, apparently they found that there's a grave on Jojo Mead's property, just barely encroaching. It's there, so this would adjust that. And we have, we have an estimate of a thousand dollars to complete that survey work and to prepare the, the appropriate deeds. That's up, is that coming from our legal, legal budget?
I mean, I'm not sure of that one, I didn't get a chance to ask.
Do you want to wait two weeks? Okay. But in terms of questions, you guys are all, you know what it is?
Yep.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Pretty straightforward, actually. Uh, let's see, special use permit, trails, Department of Natural and Cultural Resources rail trail maintenance. Lori, could you enlighten us to this one?
I can try, Stefan, let me find it here. So Stefan has been working with this, I believe this is a permit for, to do some work on the rail trail. It's about eleven hundred dollars for this permit here through the New Hampshire Department of Natural and Cultural Resources, but they didn't put it in the rap. Um, and I think there was a second part to it.
Is it for the lights?
It's for, um, maintenance on the, the rail.
Oh, sorry.
All the lights were about fifty thousand.
Yeah, this is for.
Yeah, but this is just a. Yep, yep.
Um, I believe, I believe he was, but I think there was another, um, something, not my folder, but there should be another thousand dollar bond. So I think the motion, I had him do up the motion that he was looking for, up to two thousand dollars. But I, I, I thought he said that it would be reimbursed through grant funding.
Is this time sensitive?
It depends on time of the due date, so it's right.
Um, it's for three failed culverts along the section of the rail trail. I don't think it's time sensitive, though.
So we'll push that off till we can determine whether.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Clarification on the funding.
Usually they drop, drop, dropped on my desk and then on the agenda, I didn't get a really chance to go over anything.
Okay.
Well, this is shutting down, those are predicted, the ones that washed out of the edges, I went down the trail and swabbed them.
I'm just going to try to pull up my email and see.
You filled one, don't you remember, Joe gave it for us?
Mm-hmm.
If you give me a minute, I can drop my email and see.
Are you sure it's hot in here? You hot?
Actually, actually, if you.
Are you hot?
Well, it's warm in here, yes.
Hi, I thought I was getting.
Actually, Lori, if you, if you read down, there's a motion to, uh, expend up to two thousand dollars from the Rail Trail Expendable Trust. Is that what it, is that what? Okay. Yep, no, that's where it's, that's where the money's coming from.
So we're just going to do this.
We'll do both, because the money's coming from the Expendable Trust.
Okay.
Yep. Bless you.
I move to approve the special use permit package for the purpose of rail trail maintenance to include three culverts replacements and to further approve the payment of eleven hundred dollars from the rail to trails Expendable Trust Fund, payable to the New Hampshire Department of Natural and Cultural Resources, divisions of Park and Recreation.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it? Then D.
I move to expend up to two thousand dollars from the Rail Trail Expendable Trust Fund for the payment of permitting any bonds and the necessities for maintenance work being executed along the Cheshire Rail Trail.
Second.
Any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, eyes have it? Okay, then we have the engineering report, contract agreement from Underwood Engineering, did you all have an opportunity to review that? Lori's reviewed it, Council's reviewed it. We're good to go on that, that's the one that we approved the additional funding at our last meeting. We have a twenty-five thousand dollar grant from USDA, and we originally allocated nine thousand dollars, but because of the delay, the, the cost went up another eleven hundred dollars, which we approved at the last meeting. Any discussion on that? Make a motion.
I moved to enter into the contract agreement with Underwood Engineering Incorporated, it's stated in the contract agreement dated June twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five for the project West Hornsey Water System Improvement Preliminary Engineering Report.
Second.
And this is to authorize you to sign that?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm just hoping that I can just.
Authorize it to Minister Laurie Ravagula to sign it.
Second.
Very close, Mark.
Almost.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Dan, this, this just with regard to the infrastructure, this is ongoing engineering that we're doing with the potential to bring the, the water company back on the ballot in twenty-twenty-seven. Uh, we did receive a twenty-five thousand dollar grant from USDA to put towards it, it's a thirty, roughly thirty-six thousand dollar project, and so the town is funding the balance, but that's part of the infrastructure planning that, that we're working on.
Can I just ask one question? Because obviously I want that to happen, I've talked to Jimmy about this before, are you guys going to have like informational sessions? I know we did that for the school board for, that's how we got the bond passed, to let people know, hey, this is the problems, are you going to be doing that before the next voting comes around? So you can educate people?
Yeah, we will, we, we did that this year, or this past year, unfortunately, it coincided with the fire station committee, and the, the funding came in late in the year, so we didn't have the opportunity to roll out as we would. But in this case, we've got a year and a half, and, and hopefully we'll be able to qualify for a similar loan that we, we had the opportunity for this year. It was a forty percent forgivable loan, which would have made the project very economical, and hopefully we can do the same. And, and if the numbers come back and they don't work, we won't, probably won't be moving on it, but yes, there'll definitely be a rollout for that.
I think what you're saying, Danny, is that we should have, could have pushed it a little better, I think, too, could have passed.
I know, I know, we'll have less waiting, having meetings for.
Oh, yeah, no, no, you want to wait three months before the voting happens.
Keep the trash in people's heads.
Uh, next item, next item on our agenda is an update on the governance committee. Uh, Dan, just for your edification, we have, we have two committees that we're working on now, most everyone who's here is aware of the governance committee, and we're going to roll that out at our next meeting. We do have sixteen people who have expressed an interest, I'm waiting for a call from one who's been asked to be the, the chair, and that call will come in tomorrow. Uh, and that committee will be established in August, and as, as Jim mentioned and, and some others, one of the things that they'll look at is SB two versus town meeting. If we had town meeting, we'd, we'd go back to some of that community aspect that, that you mentioned. So, and you're welcome, should you choose to put your name in, uh, for the governance committee. The, the other committee.
Shaking his head like I should.
What's that?
Said Jimmy's shaking his head like I should.
It's, uh.
Absolutely.
It was a great effort that the committee put on last year with regard to the fire station, uh, and this would be a similar committee, wouldn't be a heavy lift, as I mentioned, there's sixteen people who've indicated interest, so it's not a heavy lift by any one individual. But if, if it's of interest, just let Lori know this week. Uh, there's another committee that I wanted to talk to my, my colleagues about, and, and I didn't get a chance to at the old home day, but next year. get a chance to at the old home day, but next year is the 250th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence. And I'd just be interested in knowing if you all would be interested in putting a committee together to take in, take a look at whether this is something that Swansea should, should put an event on for, so we, we do have old home day a couple of weeks after, but this is a pretty celebratory event, I think. Those, the sacrifices that those men and women made back 249 years ago, and what happened to their lives and their families is truly remarkable. I don't know if any of us would have been up to it. I know you would have been up to it, but I'm not sure about some of the rest of us. I'd like to think I would have been. So what do you, what do you think?
I'm all in. I think it's a great thing. I think it'd be wonderful. I just hate that it's so close to old home day, but that's where, and to stop old home day and make it a big thing.
Or don't you go over all into one?
That's what I would have suggested.
And also, is there any talks about bringing back the Demond Thompson play?
That's, that's not by the town, that's done by the, uh- Yeah, there's-
Yeah, yeah, probably the Society.
Yeah, that's, they have, the, the Association owns the Potash Bowl.
Yeah.
Where they're holding the concerts now. And I think Lee Dunham would be the one that would be most likely to be able, I'm sure he'd love to bring it back. Oh, how cool would that be?
I know. That's, that's hilarious, my brother, I think it'd be awesome.
Hey, Danny.
Yeah. No, it's just for department-
I'm coaching next game. I'm not running. I'm for three days.
We had an interdepartmental softball game after the old home day on, on Saturday.
Danny, the town workers against the fire department and the police department.
The town workers went?
We came very damn close.
But Danny pitched all seven innings.
And I felt it the seven days after. Every inning cost me a day.
It hasn't even been a week yet.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have anything else, Lori?
I have a note for you. Signs for the park.
Okay. Go ahead.
And I said note to remind you.
Oh, that, yeah. Sorry?
The path over here.
Oh, yeah. Yep. So we wanna, no, no, just putting it out there that we'll concede, we'll, we'll move forward on that a little more quickly than some of the others. We had discussion earlier in the year with regard to the park, the Athletic Association Park, which is across from the, the mill just down below here, about renaming the park the Kenneth Colby Jr. Athletic Association Park, and the board was, was in favor of that. So we've, we've approached a local sign company to get pricing for a carved, a carved sign, and we'd like to put it on granite posts. So what I, what I have currently is that it would be under twenty-five hundred dollars, but without having a, a drawing, there's no way for the sign maker to, to really establish a, a price. His price for the sign is less than that. The add-on is for the granite posts and the install. So is anybody opposed to that? Don't say it in public. The reason we, we did that is that was a pet project for Ken's while, while he was on the board. And, and as Mark mentioned, as a, as a police officer, they often refer to the park as Colby Park anyway. So it just seems fitting to honor Ken for his 24-year-plus service to the town and, and his true interest in the park. So we're gonna-
He's sat in the secret 24 years.
Two terms, two, two twelve-year terms. Pretty amazing man.
Oh, just a quick question. Sorry. Now, now I'm invested. See what you guys did to me. What sign company did you go to? The guy down behind, T-Bird?
No, I went to Steve McCanney. We would obviously put it out to other Swansea sign makers.
Okay. I just wanna make sure it's staying in there.
Oh, it's in Swansea. Yep.
Okay, beautiful.
Yep. Oh, definitely staying. Yep. We'll be talking to Jay Blanchard and, and some others with regard to that as well.
Sometimes you stretch your testes, so. Cause I'm over the line. I've never heard her.
He's definitely over the line. I'd like to quickly go through some of the old business items that we, so we can scratch them off. We, the, the first item, the new fire station, that, that's, I think people are aware that the, the contract was awarded to Gordon Services. DPW has already started some site work. We have a pre, pre, pre-construction meeting scheduled for August 12th, and construction should begin shortly thereafter. Final plans are due on August 1st. We did receive the concrete plan, that's being updated, so concrete should go in the ground at some point in August. Swansea Lake Dam, that's ongoing. Is that with regard to the engineering for rebuilding of that?
Yes. Yeah, we have one more scheduled interview next week, I believe, with one of the engineers, and then we'll be, I think we're gonna have him come back for another, I think we're gonna ask a few more questions, a little more detail on the proposal, and then we'll make the decision.
Okay, so we'll keep that on. Next item, Weber Hill. Weber Hill is, is essentially done. Lori, if you wanna tell us about your blister report today?
I, I went to the finals, I think it's the final site visit today. It's pretty much done. We have a few more things to wrap up, small things with the, some of the, I'm not sure the terminology, but with the grates on the road, and it looks awesome. I'm sure everybody's ready to buy the drains. Thank you. And the grass is coming in good. That's actually, there's a few bare spots, but Joe's said to wait until maybe end of September or October, and if it hasn't come in yet, then they'll hit it again with the hydro. So make sure we get the stability of the, really good. Great, great job, John, John by Gordon.
Are we gonna stay one way on that street? One way?
Yes.
That's gonna just stay like it is?
Well, for now.
For now. So the last phase of that, go ahead.
I just had a comment and question. Thing looks awesome. I don't think anybody expected it to look like it does. It's really hard to remember what it looked like. How much did it cost?
You don't wanna ruin it, do you, now?
We, I know we were over budget, but I, I just don't have, I'm still a rookie. I don't know what-
People are asking, we don't wanna have the wrong answer.
Yeah. I wanna say, I just don't wanna say anything and that be wrong, but I, I thought it was 1.5 and we budgeted 1.2, but I could be wrong. I, I-
No, you're very close.
I could touch Joe and ask him right now.
Very close. That's a ballpark. You could say 1.5.
Yeah, we're, we're also looking at putting in one more feature, which is a guard rail.
Right at that turn.
Right at the turn. And the estimate for that is roughly ninety thousand dollars, but that will preserve the hillside.
Did you say ninety thousand?
Isn't that what you said?
I don't think so.
No? Well, anyway, don't quote me on the ninety, but, but that's the next phase, the last phase. So we can take Weber Hill off?
I was texting Joe. Yeah, yeah, can you turn it off?
Okay, and then the next, the rail trail improvements under the tap, tap grant. Can we, can you check with Mike this week to see if that's been taken care of? We should get an update on the crosswalk signals when, when those are going in on Matthews Road. We have three crosswalk signals going in on Matthews Road where the rail trail crosses the road. Those came from a mass grant that we received at the end of last year. Christian Hill Bridge, that's ongoing. California North Winchester Street, that's, that's about ready to be paved, it looks like.
Pretty close with the one sheet, and then they're gonna take up.
For North Winchester.
They said today they are under, under budget on Winchester Street right now.
Great. So we'll keep that on there. Grange Hall Roof Repair, I think we can remove that because that's done. But I, again, I think giving credit to Martin and Stephanie Rose, their company, MJR Painting, they, they've offered to paint the building of the Grange Hall at, at no charge, and paints being donated by Sherwin-Williams. And I, I believe there was, there was another vendor that, that donated paint. Oh, Benjamin Moore. Okay. So Benjamin Moore and Sherwin-Williams. That's a tremendous gift that, that they've don, they've donated. That'll be done sometime in September. But the, but the roof repair, that's completed.
You gotta strip it and paint it.
Yep. So it's amazing. Uh, New Hampshire DOT Route 32 Bridge Over Martin Brook and the Dry Hydrant, that's still ongoing. Waste Water Solar Array Design and Permitting are done, and other coordination has been underway. Do we have any update on that?
That has started, yeah. We got the funding and the project is-
So it's ongoing. Okay.
Yep.
Waste Water Treatment Plant, that's what I mentioned earlier, Dan. That, that study is due back in October, and that's with regard to updating or finding out what we need to do to update the West Swansea Water Treatment Plant. And then Brownfield, uh, Brownfield Improvements. Our staff is looking into identifying grant opportunities to improve Brownfield. We have anything else?
Joe, I just said, um, eight hundred thousand came from FEMA for Weber Hill, and he thinks he's gonna check on the sheet, but he thinks it was a little bit more, because we came in over budget, a little bit more than 1.5.
Okay, well, I think we're gonna be in touch with you anyway, Neil, so we'll, we'll get that hard number for you. Okay? Am I missing anything? All right, last shot of public input, Mark.
I just went across you and I wanted to interrupt you, but I'm a little fire station. Will, will we be able to make use of that, if it's, you know, all over?
No. There was a strong attempt by my colleague to my left to make sure that that was utilized.
And I'm not giving up on it. I wanna see the building sit on it.
Yeah, and it, it just-
It's lined up.
It was, it was ju, it got five feet, five feet, five feet south, and it would have been fine. But-
I think the footing lines right up on it, right? That's what it looks like in paper. I tried to say that Mark, we'd washed out trucks and did whatever, watered the grass.
Well, you have to pour the wells and pipe and water, don't you? You can't just try and get a little pump.
We, we did talk, actually, actually, we did talk with Cushing about that to, to ask that very, very same question. And yeah, trying to get a pump down or back up would be virtually impossible, so.
Yeah, hold your office.
Yep. Yep. And there, that's right. It'd be a geyser. Anybody else? Michael?
Yeah, I have one question. Danny, you can answer this one. Couple of schools has been officially closed and posted. You know what I mean by posted?
Tell the schools to close yet.
No, won't be closed.
No, they're not planning to move into the addition until after Christmas break next year.
Right. Okay.
Yeah.
Well, this year, Dan. You mean next school year, but this year.
Yeah. Yeah, after Christmas break, uh, the next school year.
You're right. Yep.
Can I just ask him about the dugouts real quick? About the pitching boat?
Sure, but go ahead.
Do you, you know, I went to play softball over there, Danny. I'm just curious. The home dugout seemed really clean, but the visitors dugout was like, birds lived in it. We couldn't even sit down. Who's supposed to take care of these? Does anybody wash them? I mean, it's going to-
On the new softball field?
We played on the baseball field.
On the baseball field?
Danny, it's, it's really terrible.
You wanna, you wanna talk to, who's the maintenance guy? Who runs the maintenance department out of that? Now, if you wanna talk to him?
Yeah, but do we, do we, just 'cause it's visitors?
Possibly. I mean, that'd be a bad thing to do, but funny.
I think that's why we lost the games, because Billy Cliff slipped an adventure.
Push that button, will you?
Can you go that fast and run with the slip?
No, but it was, we had a fun time. I'm like, just saying. It was a lot of birds.
Jeremy and, and Tony and Tom Cody really, really helped us out. It was a, it was a tremendous event that we couldn't have done without their support. So we, we will be sending a letter of appreciation, because it was a tremen, it really was a lot of fun for about forty, what would you think, about twenty-five people?
I mean, I'm not on school board now, but Jeremy Graburn, if I can say anything, he is doing a fantastic job as superintendent of schools with us. I think he's fantastic.
Yeah, he's done a great job. Very approachable.
Oh, yeah?
Yep.
And he has a genuine love for the school district.
Yes, he does.
Which is hard to find.
Yes, he does. Anybody else? Before we go into non-public. All right, well, thank you very much for coming. We appreciate it. Thank you.